ओ भगवते वासुदेवाय
बाया पालो ओ
ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओ मजनानति मिरांधस्याग्नानंजनशलाकय चक्षरण मिलितम्येनात अस्मई श्री गुरवे नमः नमः ओम विष्णुपादाय कृष्ण प्रिष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्तिवेदांत स्वाभिन्न इतिनामिनि नमस्ते सारस्वतीत देवी गौरवाणी प्रचारणि निर्विशेषा सुन्यवादी पास्चात्यदेशतारणि जय श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य प्रभो नित्यानंद श्री अद्वयितगदाधरण श्रीवासाधि गौरभत्तवृंद हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे हरे कृष्णा हाय वेलकम ऑल डिटर्न फॉर दिस स्पेशल सेशन ऑन डी ग्लोरीज ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी फ्रॉम भगवत गिता सो चिल्ड्रन टुडे विल रिसाइट ए ब्यूटीफुल श्लोका फ्रॉम डी भगवत गिता एंड विल डिसकस इट्स मीनिंग एंड आल्सो डिसकस सम ग्लोरीज ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी आस हाईलेटेड इन अदर स्क्रिप्ट्स आल्सो लेट्स बिगिन आई एम रीडिंग फ्रॉम डी नाइंथ चैप्टर ऑफ़ भगवत गिता महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम वुड यू लाइक तू रिसाइट? महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था
महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम
एक्सीलेंट नेक्स्ट यस यू कैन रिसाइट? महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था
महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम
वेरी गुड सो वैन लास्ट डी सेटिशन महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था
महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था
मनसो दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत
दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत
भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो
भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो
ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम
ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम
हरे कृष्णा सो चिल्ड्रन प्लीज कीप योरसेल्फ अन म्यूट सो डेट डेटर इज नो डिस्टर्बेंस ऑफ़ बैकग्राउंड नाइस विल डिसकस ना रशिका प्लीज कीप योरसेल्फ अन म्यूट या थैंक यू सो महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था कृष्ण से इन डी भगवत गिता महात्मा इस अन ग्रेट सोल हु टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी आत्मा मींस सोल राइट? महात्मा मींस ग्रेट सोल अन वेरी एडवांस्ड सोल अन वेरी एक्सोल्टेड पर्सनैलिटी सो व्हाट डू डे डू? व्हाट मेक्स डी महात्मा? डे टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ दैवी प्रकृति व्हाट इस दैवी प्रकृति? दैवी प्रकृति मींस डी डिवाइन एनर्जी ऑफ़ कृष्णा डेट इस श्रीमती राधाहरणी श्रीमती राधाहरणी इस डी पर्सनिफिकेशन ऑफ़ डी इंटरनल पोटेंसी डी स्पिरिचुअल एनर्जी ऑफ़ कृष्णा शी इस डी डिवाइन पोटेंसी महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत मासृत मींस वैन हु हैस टेकन शेल्टर ऑफ़ सो दैवी प्रकृति श्रीमती राधाहरणी दैवी प्रकृति मासृत मींस टेकिंग शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी सो कृष्ण डिफाइंस हु इस अन महात्मा महात्मा इस अन पर्सन हु टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ माय इंटरनल पोटेंसी माय डिवाइन एनर्जी श्रीमती राधाहरणी पार्था रिफर्स तू अर्जुना राइट? कृष्ण इस टेलिंग तू टेलिंग अर्जुना डेट माम दैवीं प्रकृति सो माय इंटरनल पोटेंसी मासृत वैन हु हैस टेकन शेल्टर ऑफ़ डेट माय इंटरनल पोटेंसी इस कॉल्ड डी महात्मा क्लियर? सो हु इस अन महात्मा? वैन हु हैस टेकन शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी इस अन महात्मा एंड व्हाट डू डे डू? सो टेकिंग शेल्टर ऑफ़ राधाहरणी अचूरली मींस व्हाट? वर्षिपिंग कृष्ण विथ लव एंड डिवोशन इसेंट इट?
हाय निशान प्रभु इट विल बी बेटर इफ योर वॉल्यूम समहो आ आयर प्रभु इस लो वॉल्यूम
आई एम आइडियल ना?
आह आई थिंक इट्स अन लिटिल बिट ना
ओके थैंक यू आई थिंक आई विल कम क्लोजर थैंक यू सो भजन्त्य अनन्य मनसो ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम बाय टेकिंग शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी सच महात्मा सच ग्रेट सोल्स भजन्त्य डे परफॉर्म सर्विस ऑफ़ कृष्णा भजन और भजन्त्य मींस तू वर्षिप कृष्णा तू सर्व कृष्णा हो अनन्य मनसो अन्य मींस समथिंग एल्स अनन्य मींस नथिंग एल्स सो वैन हु हैस टेकन शेल्टर ऑफ़ राधाहरणी डेटेन्ट अलो हिस और हर माइंड तू गेट डिस्ट्रैक्टेड बाय एनीथिंग राइट? ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम सो हो व्हाट डू डे डू? फर्स्ट इस डे टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी राइट? सेकंड इस डे वर्षिप कृष्णा विथॉउट अन्य डिस्ट्रैक्शंस और डिविएशंस इन डी माइंड थर्ड इस ज्ञात्व मींस डे अंडरस्टैंड व्हाट? डेट कृष्णा इस डी भूता आदिम भूता मींस अन डी लिविंग एंटिटिस आदि मींस डी ओरिजिन और डी सोर्स सो कृष्णा इस डी सोर्स ऑफ़ अन लिविंग एंटिटिस डे अंडरस्टैंड डेट अव्ययम कृष्णा इस इनएक्सास्टेबल राइट? डेट आल्सो डे अंडरस्टैंड सो नाव टेल मी हु इस अन महात्मा? महात्मा इस सम्मान फर्स्ट पॉइंट वैन हु हैस टेकन शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी सेकंड वैन हु वर्षिप कृष्णा विथ एक्सक्लूसिव डिवोशन विथॉउट अन्य डिस्ट्रैक्शंस और डिविएशंस इन डी माइंड थ्री वैन हु अंडरस्टैंड्स डेट कृष्णा इस डी ओरिजिन ऑफ़ अन लिविंग एंटिटिस एंड येट इनएक्सास्टेबल डेट इज नो डिमिनिशन ऑफ़ हिस पॉवर्स अव्ययम यया मींस डी पॉवर्स विल गो डाउन बट अव्ययम मींस कृष्णा स पॉवर्स विल नेवर गो डाउन अल्दो ही इस डी ओरिजिन ऑफ़ अनलिमिटेड यूनिवर्सिस ही इस डी ओरिजिन ऑफ़ अनलिमिटेड इनकार्नेशंस अनलिमिटेड लिविंग एंटिटिस स्टिल कृष्णा रिमेंस इनटैक्ट डेट इज नो एक्सास्टेबल फॉर कृष्णा यू अंडरस्टैंड डी मीनिंग ऑफ़ दिस श्लोका? यस श्री या पार्स तार्ती टेल मी डी मीनिंग व्हाट डू डे अंडरस्टैंड फ्रॉम दिस श्लोका? आई विल शो दिस श्लोका यू एक्सप्लेन डी मीनिंग महात्मा नस्तुमाम पार्था दैवीं प्रकृति मासृत भजन्त्यनन्य मनसो ज्ञात्व भूतादिम अव्ययम टेल मी डी मीनिंग? ओके जय त्रिकृष्ण से
प्रभु जी आई एम आइडियल
यू आर आइडियल प्लीज स्पीक
महात्मा महात्मा मींस आत्मा इस अन सोल और महात्मा मींस वैन बूस ग्रेटर
ग्रेट सोल
पार्था इस अर्जुना
ओके फाइन लेट डोरेंग स्पीक
प्रभु जी आई अंडरस्टैंड डेट महात्मा इस अन ग्रेट सोल डे टेक शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी डे तू सर्विस ऑफ़ कृष्णा डे डोंट अलो
वित्त
डिस्ट्रैक्टेड बाय एनीथिंग
अन करेक्ट करेक्ट
या आई अंडरस्टैंड कृष्णा इस डी सोर्स ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग डे इनेक्सास्टेबल
वाओ अमेजिंग थैंक यू थैंक यू सो मच गरंगी एक्सीलेंट एंड एक्यूरेट एक्सप्लेनेशन ऑफ़ दिस श्लोका सो लेट मी एक्सप्लेन वंस अगेन महात्मा आर ग्रेट सोल्स एंड महात्मा आर डोस पीपल हु हैव टेकन एक्सक्लूसिव शेल्टर ऑफ़ श्रीमती राधाहरणी एंड अंडर हर शेल्टर हु इस डी गॉडेस ऑफ़ डिवोशन डे वर्षिप कृष्णा विथॉउट अन्य डिस्ट्रैक्शंस और डिविएशंस इन डी माइंड एंड डे आल्सो अंडरस्टैंड डेट कृष्णा इस डी सोर्स ऑफ़ एवरीथिंग येट ही रिमेंस इनएक्सास्टेबल ही इस ऑलवेज पॉवरफुल डेटर इज नो डिमिनिशन ऑफ़ हिस एनर्जीज ओके? सो दिस इस डी मिडिल मोस्ट श्लोक ऑफ़ भगवत गिता आई विल कम तू डेट आई विल आल्सो डिसकस डी नेक्स्ट श्लोका सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य नित्य युक्त उपसते यस रिसाइट दिस? सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम हम
सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम
यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता
यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता
नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य
नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य नित्य युक्त उपसते
ओके ग्रेट वैन मोर
सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य नित्य युक्त उपसते
गुड वैन मोर यू वांट रिसाइट? सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम
सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम
यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता
यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता
नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य
नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य
नित्य युक्त उपसते
नित्य युक्त उपसते
सततम कीर्तयंतोमाम मींस ऑलवेज चांटिंग डी ग्लोरीज ऑफ़ कृष्णा सो इन डी प्रीवियस श्लोका कृष्णा स्पोक डी क्वालिटीज ऑफ़ महात्मा राइट? नाव ही इस कंटिन्यूइंग तू डिस्क्रिप्ट डी क्वालिटीज ऑफ़ महात्मा व्हाट एल्स डू डे डू? इन दिस श्लोका ही स्पीक सम क्वालिटीज नंबर वैन महात्मा कांस्टेंटली चांट कृष्णा स नेम्स सततम मींस ऑलवेज कीर्तयंतोमाम डे ऑलवेज चांट कृष्णा स नेम्स यतन तस्चद्र ढव्रता मींस डे आल्सो एंडीवर तू सर्व हिम विथ ग्रेट डिटरमिनेशन ढव्रता मींस डिटरमिनेशन डे आर वेरी मच डिटरमाइंड नमस्यंतस्चा डे आल्सो ऑफर प्रणाम्स ओबेसेंसेस तू कृष्णा माम भक्त्य डे ऑफर प्रणाम्स विथ डिवोशन समटेस्ट व्हान यू गो इन फ्रेंट ऑफ़ डी डेटीज इन अन टेंपल यू मैन ऑफर ओबेसेंसेस बट समटेस्ट वी आर रिचुलिस्टिक वी जस्ट गो फॉल फ्लैट ऑन डी फ्लोर गेट अप एंड देन गो आयर एंड रन जंप राइट? इट हैपन्स राइट? बट वी नीड तू ऑफर ओबेसेंसेस विथ डिवोशन विथ हार्ट विथ लव विथ अफेक्शन इसेंट इट? डेट्स व्हाट कृष्ण इस सेइंग इट्स नॉट जस्ट नमस्यंतस्चा नमस्यंतस्चम्माम भक्त्य यू शुड ऑफर नमस्कार तू कृष्णा विथ डिवोशन देन नित्य युक्त उपसते नित्य मींस ऑलवेज रेगुलरली एवरी डे नॉट डेट वैन डे वी ऑफर ओबेसेंसेस नेक्स्ट डे वी टेक ए लीव सो नित्य युक्त उपसते मींस डे आर कांस्टेंटली इन दिस मोड और मोड ऑफ़ ऑफरिंग ओबेसेंसेस तू कृष्णा उपसते मींस वर्षिप ऑफ़ कृष्णा राइट? सो इन शॉर्ट लेट मी डिसकस वंस अगेन महात्मा आर डे कांस्टेंटली चांट कृष्णा स नेम्स सेकंड डे सर्व कृष्णा विथ डिटरमिनेशन थर्ड डे ऑफर ओबेसेंसेस तू कृष्णा एंड डे वर्षिप कृष्णा राइट? डे ऑफर ओबेसेंसेस विथ डिवोशन एंड डे वर्षिप कृष्णा रेगुलरली रेगुलर वर्षिप डिवोशनल ओबेसेंसेस डिटरमाइंड सर्विस एंड कांस्टेंट चांटिंग राइट? फोर थिंग्स फर्स्ट इस कांस्टेंट चांटिंग सेकंड इस डिटरमाइंड सर्विस थर्ड इस डिवोशनल ओबेसेंसेस फोर्थ इस रेगुलर वर्षिप फाइन टेल मी डी मीनिंग ऑफ़ दिस श्लोका विल से हम यस प्लीज डोंट ओपन होल दिस वाइट बोर्ड्स चिल्ड्रन व्हेयर हैस ओपन प्लीज क्लोज इट आई डोंट नो हो तू क्लोज ओके फाइन सास सस्तिका राइट?
यस प्रभु जी
या
आह आई एम आइडियल प्रभु जी
यू आर आइडियल यू कैन टेल डी मीनिंग
यस प्रभु जी हरे कृष्णा प्रभु जी ऑलवेज विश चांट कृष्णा स नेम विथ भक्ति प्रभु जी ऑलवेज वांट तू सर्व हिम विथ डर प्रणाम्स तू कृष्णा प्रभु जी ऑलवेज ऑफर प्रणाम्स विथ भक्ति रेगुलरली प्रभु जी थैंक यू प्रभु जी
थैंक यू थैंक यू हरे कृष्णा सो दिस आर डी क्वालिटीज ऑफ़ महात्मा ना व्हाट इस डी स्पेशलिटी ऑफ़ दिस तू श्लोका व्हाय डेट आई चूज़ दिस तू श्लोका दिस तू श्लोका डिस्क्रिप्ट डी ग्लोरीज ऑफ़ ग्रेट सोल्स अन स्मॉल सोल कैन बिकम अन ग्रेट सोल बाय डिवोशनल सर्विस अंडर डी शेल्टर ऑफ़ गॉडेस ऑफ़ डिवोशन श्रीमती राधाहरणी राइट? सो डेट्स व्हाट दिस तू श्लोका आर टीचिंग डेट सो श्रीमती राधाहरणी इस डी हार्ट ऑफ़ कृष्णा शी इस ऑलवेज डेयर इन डी हार्ट ऑफ़ कृष्णा सो वी नीड तू डायरेक्ट आवर हार्ट्स तू डी हार्ट ऑफ़ कृष्णा वेयर श्रीमती राधाहरणी एक्जिस्ट राइट? सो स्पिरिचुअल प्लेजर इन सर्विस तू कृष्णा इस बेस्टोड अपऑन अस बाय डी ब्लेसिंग्स ऑफ़ कृष्णा स प्लेजर पोटेंसी श्रीमती राधाहरणी इट इस श्रीमती राधाहरणी हु बेस्टोस डिवोशन अपऑन अस सो वी आर ऑल अम्शेस ऑफ़ कृष्णा यू नो व्हाट इस अम्शा? अम्शा मींस अन स्मॉल पार्ट राइट? वी आर ऑल अम्शेस ऑफ़ कृष्णा एंड व्हाटएवर डिवोशन वी हैव टुवर्ड्स कृष्णा इस अन अम्शा ऑफ़ राधाहरणी स डिवोशन फॉर कृष्णा ऑफ़ अन डिवोर्टिस ऑफ़ कृष्णा डी बेस्ट डिवोटी डी टॉपमोस्ट डिवोटी ऑफ़ कृष्णा इस श्रीमती राधाहरणी शी इस डी टॉपमोस्ट डिवोटी ऑफ़ कृष्णा एंड व्हाटएवर लिटिल डिवोशन वी हैव फॉर कृष्णा इस अन स्मॉल पार्ट ऑफ़ हर डिवोशन तू कृष्णा ओली बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ हर ब्लेसिंग्स वी डेवलप सम भक्ति राइट? सो दिस इस व्हाट दिस तू श्लोका आर टीचिंग डेट एस्पेशली डी 13 श्लोका सो भक्ति इस नॉट जस्ट अन इमोशन मेनी टाइम्स पीपल थिंक डेट भक्ति मींस अन इमोशन डी इमोशन ऑफ़ डिवोशन बट विथिन दिस इमोशन ऑफ़ भक्ति एक्शन इस आल्सो इनवॉल्ड भक्ति इस नॉट जस्ट अन इमोशन भक्ति इस अन एक्शन डन विथ इमोशन एंड डेट इमोशन इस डिवोशन सो इट्स अन अनलिमिटेड एक्शन परफॉर्म विथ लविंग इमोशन विथ डी ब्लेसिंग्स ऑफ़ डी सुप्रीम गॉडेस ऑफ़ डिवोशन श्रीमती राधाहरणी डेट इस भक्ति देयरफाई प्रभुपाद नेवर ट्रांसलेट्स भक्ति आस डिवोशन ओनली प्रभुपाद ट्रांसलेट्स भक्ति आस डिवोशनल सर्विस वी नीड तू सर्व विथ डिवोशन व्हेन वी हैव डिवोशन वी नेचुरली रेंडर सर्विस तू डी लॉर्ड राइट? अदरवाइस आवर डिवोशन इस नॉट कंप्लीट डिवोशन इस नॉट पैसिव डिवोशन इस वेरी एक्टिव सो एक्टिवली वी नीड तू रेंडर सर्विस तू कृष्णा नाव आह हो श्रीमती राधाहरणी ओके बिफोर डेट लेट मी शो यू सम एनालिसिस कैन सम्मान रिपीट दिस? हु इस अन गुड रीडर? आह प्लीज रिट दिस पैरग्राफ रिटेन बाय श्रीलपुर प्रभुपाद हम जय श्री राम जय श्री राम रिट रिट स्लोनी
ओके प्रभु जी डी वर्ड्स दैवीं प्रकृति रिफर्ट तू डी कंट्रोल ऑफ़ डी इंटरनल पोटेंसी और प्लेजर पोटेंसी ऑफ़ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ़ गॉड हेड दिस प्लेजर पोटेंसी इस मैन्यफेस्टेड आस श्रीमती राधा रानी
Popularly called as Dhyanayoga. Dhyanayoga means you try to connect with Krishna with your meditation. These are types of yogas. So, of all these four yogas, Bhaktiyoga is the best. Why Bhaktiyoga is the best, children tell me? Who will answer this question? There is Karma Yoga, Dhyanayoga, Jnana Yoga and Bhakti Yoga. Of these four yogas, why Bhakti Yoga is considered the best of all? Yes.
Prabhuji, Bhakti Yoga is best because we will please Krishna and also please Radha Rani.
Okay, in Karma Yoga you cannot please Radha Krishna?
Um.
Okay, okay, good. Vrindha, you want to answer?
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, in Bhakti Yoga, all the other three yogas are automatically included in it.
How, how other three yogas are there in Bhakti Yoga?
So Bhakti Yoga means love for Krishna and in Karma Yoga it means working for Krishna. So if you love someone, you will do something for them. And Dhyanayoga means, means thinking of someone. So if you love someone, you will think about him.
Correct.
Dhyanayoga means knowing, knowing, knowing about someone. So, so if you love someone, then you will, you will know him.
So Bhakti includes Karma, Dhyanayoga, Jnana, all three?
Yeah.
Does Karma include Bhakti? Huh?
No, Prabhuji.
It may not, it may not be. It may sometimes but not necessary. Similarly, knowledge may not include love, uh, thinking may not include love and work may not include love, but love includes all three. Okay, therefore Bhakti is the best. Thank you, thank you for that. Now Bhakti Yoga is described in every chapter Bhagavat Gita, but the middle six chapters describe Bhakti Yoga more deeply. Fine, now let's go deep into this. In this middle, uh, total there are seven hundred slokas, right? In the seven hundred slokas, the middle two numbers are sloka number three fifty and three fifty one, isn't it? In the seven hundred, the middle most two numbers are three fifty and three fifty one. So ninth chapter, thirteenth and fourteenth slokas are these two slokas. Nine, three fifty and three fifty one. So nine point thirteen, that we just decided. What is that? That is the thirteenth sloka of ninth chapter, that is sloka number three fifty of Bhagavat Gita. Then nine point fourteen, this sloka number three fifty of Bhagavat Gita. So Krishna has kept Shrimati Radharani and Kirtan are chanting the holy names of the Lord right in the middle of Bhagavat Gita in slokas number three fifty and three fifty one, isn't it? So that's the importance that Krishna has given to Shrimati Radharani and Kirtan. So we need to take shelter of Shrimati Radharani. We need to take shelter of the process of chanting the holy names of Krishna to become known as devotees or to advance in the path of Bhakti. Okay, children? So now with this prelude, let's try to understand few more glories of Shrimati Radharani. We'll recite a beautiful sloka. Maybe some older kids can recite this, this is a little longer sloka. Who will recite? Let me, any X P I, I just, I'm trying to find some. Yes, you can recite. Ananta koti Vishnu lokanam rapad majar chite.
Ananta koti Vishnu lokanam rapad majar chite.
Himadrija pulo majavi rincha javara pradeem. We can't hear you at all. Okay, let you recite. Ananta koti Vishnu lokanam rapad majar chite.
Ananta koti Vishnu lokanam rapad majar chite.
Himadrija pulo majavi nincha javara pradeem.
Himadrija pulo majavi rincha javara prade.
Apara sidhi riddhi diggha sat padanguli nakhem.
Apara sidhi riddhi dighta sat padanguli nakhem.
Kadakarishya sihamam kripa kataksha bhajanam.
Kadakarishya sihamam kripa kataksha bhajanam.
Good. Ananta koti means unlimited crores. Koti means ten million, one crore is ten million, that is koti. Ananta koti means unlimited crores, right? Ananta koti Vishnu lokanam rapad majar chite means unlimited vaishnavas, crores of vaishnavas, take shelter of Shrimati Radharani. One more point is Padmajar chite. What is Padmajar? Padma means lotus, right? Padmajar means one who is born out of lotus. Who is born in a lotus? Brahma is born in the lotus. In the beginning of the creation, Lord Garbhodhaka Sai Vishnu was lying on the Garbhodhaka Ocean and a lotus grew from the navel of Garbhodhaka Sai Vishnu and Brahma took birth on top of that lotus, isn't it? So he is called Padmajar. Even Brahma also worships, uh, Radharani. Unlimited crores of vaishnavas worship Radharani. And Brahma also worships Radharani. One more thing, Himadrija, Himadrija refers to Parvati Devi. Pullo majja, pullo majja refers to Sachi Devi. Virinchaja refers to Saraswati Devi. Parvati Devi, the wife of Lord Shiva. Pullo majja means Sachi Devi, the wife of Indra. Virinchaja Saraswati Devi, who is the, uh, who is the wife of Lord Brahma. Varaprade, they all take blessings from Shrimati Radharani. Radharani is worshipped by millions of vaishnavas with humility and also worshipped by Brahma and also blessed and also shavars blessings upon Parvati Devi, Sachi Devi and Saraswati Devi. Apara sidhi riddhi dighta sat padanguli nakhem. Apara sidhi means unlimited mystic powers, right? So padanguli means the toenails of Shrimati Radharani. So all the mystic powers and divine opulences are there at the lotus feet or toenails of Shrimati Radharani. Kadakarishya sihamam kripa kataksha bhajanam. So the devotee is offering this prayer. You know who composed this prayer? Lord Shiva personally composed this prayer. So Lord Shiva says that, oh, Shrimati Radharani, when will I get an opportunity to, uh, get your affectionate, compassionate glances? Kripa kataksha, kripa means mercy. Kripa kataksha bhajanam, when will I become an object of your merciful glances? He is offering, he is, he is offering this prayer. Now, let's try to, uh, understand the importance of chanting the names of Radha and Krishna. What mantra do we chant every day? Hare Krishna Mahamantra. In the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, we have three words, isn't it? What are they? Hare Krishna Ram. So when we chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram Hare Hare. So in this sixteen word mantra, we repeat only three words, Hare Krishna and Ram. Clear? So what is Hare? In this Hare Krishna Mahamantra, what is Hare? Hare refers to Shrimati Radharani, isn't it? Krishna refers to Krishna. Ram refers to Ram. And for some devotees, Ram is also Krishna. Okay, let me tell you one little story. Long back, some devotees went to Shrilaprabhu Pad and asked the question. Prabhu Pad, when we are chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, uh, when we say Ram, like whom are we indicating? Some devotees are saying it is Lord Ramachandra, son of Dasharadha Maharash. But some devotees say that no, no, it is not Ramachandra, it is Balaram, Krishna's older brother. But some devotees are saying that Ram is also Krishna only. So Prabhupada was hearing all this. So what were they saying? Some devotees are saying that Ram in this Hare Krishna Mahamantra is Lord Ramachandra. Prabhupada said, correct, he is right. And the devotee said, no Prabhupada, this devotee says that Ram refers to Balaram. Prabhupada said, he is also correct. Oh, really? But this devotee says Ram is Krishna there. Then Prabhupada says, yes, this devotee is also correct. And then devotees are confused. How can all three devotees speak correct? When we say Ram, either we indicate Lord Ramachandra or Balaram or Krishna, but Prabhupada says all three are correct. Then devotees asked, Prabhupada, how can all of them be correct? They are saying three different things. And Prabhupada said, you decide. You decide that. Now devotees may get confused. Okay, why is Prabhupada saying like this, you decide? He wants to skip the question? No, Prabhupada actually gave a very practical answer, very profound answer. Basically, that Ram in Hare Krishna Mahamantra can refer to Lord Ramachandra if you meditate on Ram. But that Ram word can refer to Balaram if you are devoted to Lord Balaramji. And Ram can also refer to Krishna if you are, uh, if you are referring to Lord Krishna himself as Radha Raman, one who enjoys with Shrimati Radharani and who gives so much enjoyment to Shrimati Radharani. So Krishna is also called Radha Raman, you can call Ram also Krishna. So basically the Lord reciprocates with our mood. Which our mood we approach, in that same mood, the Lord will reciprocate. Do you know any sloka where Lord Krishna said that I will reciprocate with the devotees in a mood in which they approach me? Anyone knows that sloka? Krishna says that in the Bhagavat Gita, in the fourth chapter, if you want a hint. You know, nobody knows. Hmm, yes, Dhanya knows, Dhanya.
Yeyyata ma prapadyante.
Correct, correct. The meaning of this sloka is that way we approach Krishna in a similar way Krishna will reciprocate. Similarly, when we are chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, when we say Ram in the second line, Hare Ram, Hare Ram. If you are meditating on Lord Ramachandra, Raghava Ram, Raghu Ram, Sitapati Ram, then Ram will reciprocate. If you meditate on Radha Raman Krishna, then Krishna will reciprocate. If you meditate on Halathar, Balaram, Balaram will reciprocate. Ultimately, all three of them are same, but they manifest themselves in different forms, right? God is one, but he has multiple forms. Ram, Krishna, Varaha, Vaavana, Marasamha, Madsya Kurma. So depending on your mood, depending on your favorite deity, the Lord will reciprocate, right? So who is your favorite deity? Uh, which form of the Supreme Lord do you love the most? Uh, yes. Huh?
Krishna.
Krishna, who is Krishna? Dwarka Krishna, Vrindavan Krishna?
Vrindavan Krishna.
Vrindavan Krishna, my God, he is very confident. Uh, some, some like Kurkshetra Krishna more as a Rathsara thing. Who likes Kurkshetra Krishna more? Which is that devotee who loves to see Krishna as a warrior on the battlefield? Huh, tell me that name of the devotee who loves to see Krishna as a warrior? Uh, Tejasvini?
Um, Kurum.
Huh, very popular devotee. Yes, Sriram?
Bhishma Charu.
Yes, Bhishma. Bhishma Deva loves to see Krishna in Kurkshetra battle. All the gopis of Vrindavan, they allowed to see Krishna in Vrindavan while playing flute, while tending cows. Similarly, all the matravasis, Vasudevand Devaki, they allowed to see Krishna as Motradish. And all the queens of Krishna, they allowed to see Krishna as Dwarkadish in Dwarka. Dressed himself, dressed himself as a great prince. So like that, different devotees have different favorite forms of the Lord. And Hanumanji loves Lord Ramachandraji most, right? So, uh, it depends on your mood. So in Radha and Krishna, fine? So what is the greatness of meditating on the names of Radha and Krishna or chanting the names of Radha and Krishna? So let's try to, uh, remember this. Now, we discussed two slokas of Bhagavat Gita. I hope you are able to follow the flow of thought, children. We discussed two slokas from Bhagavat Gita. In the first sloka, we have seen that a Mahatma is someone who takes shelter of Shrimati Radharani. In the second sloka, we have seen that Mahatma is one who always chants Krishna's names. Fine? So I recited one sloka from Radha Kripa Kataksha Stotra, where Radharani gives shelter to so many devotees. That is Mahatma Anastama Partha Devi Prakritimashita. Now we are focusing on the second sloka, where devotees chant the holy names of the Lord. So let's see. Someone has to recite this sweet sloka, very sweet sloka. And you have to memorize it also, whenever we meet next time. Dia, you want to recite?
Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham.
Hmm, okay. Harush, you can recite.
Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham.
Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham.
Krishneti nama madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham.
Krishneti nama madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham.
Sarvakshanamsurabhiraagahimena ramyam.
Sarvakshanamsurabhiraagahimena ramyam.
Kritvata devapi bemerasanekshudarte.
Kritvata devapi bemerasanekshudarte.
Okay, good, good. One more recitation, some older kids. Dhanya?
Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham.
Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham.
Krishneti nama madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham.
Krishneti nama madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham.
Sarvakshanamsurabhiraagahimena ramyam.
Sarvakshanamsurabhiraagahimena ramyam.
Kritvata devapi bemerasanekshudarte.
Kritvata devapi bemerasanekshudarte.
Hmm. Discuss the meaning of this. So we have seen that in the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, we have eight names of Radharani, eight names of Krishna. Clear? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram Hare Hare, right? Total eight Haras and four Rams and four Krishnas. So eight names of the Lord, eight names of Krishna, eight names of Radharani. Now, whenever we say Radha or Hari, Radheti namanava sundarasidhumudham. Shrimati Radharani's name is Nava, means fresh. Sundara, beautiful. Sidhu means nectar. Mudham, very intoxicating, uh, fresh and tasty and relishable nectar is Shrimati Radharani's name. So Radharani's name is nectar, pure nectar, fine? What about Krishna's name there? Krishneti nama madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham. So Krishna's name is Madhura, very sweet. Adhuta means wonderful. Gaadha means condensed, dugdham means milk. Have you seen, have you ever tasted Rabdi? So dugdham means condensed, uh, dugdham means milk. Gaadha dugdham means condensed milk. Adhuthagaadha dugdham means wonderful condensed milk. Madhuradhuthagaadha dugdham means very sweet nectarian, wonderfully condensed milk, right? And this is, Radharani's name is like fresh, uh, nectar. So Radharani's name is fresh nectar, Krishna's name is condensed, condensed milk, right? When you chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra, you are basically tasting a combination of fresh nectar and condensed milk. So I hope your mouth is watering. Are you inclined or are you excited to chant Radha Krishna's name, Hare Krishna Mahamantra? How many rounds you chant every day? Padma, how many rounds you chant every day?
Um, my mother does sixteen rounds and I do two rounds.
Okay, you do two rounds, okay, fine, no problem. And Garangi, how many rounds? Did you increase?
Prabhuji, I do six rounds, I do six rounds.
Six rounds, very good, very good, thank you. I think you have increased the number since the time we met last time. Okay, Harush wants to say. Yes, Prabhu?
Eight.
Eight rounds, very good. Two, four, six, eight, very good. Sriram? Where are you, eleven or more?
Twelve.
Twelve, oh yeah, now you are becoming, you are becoming twelve years old? Okay, very good. Of Krishna, uh, Hare Krishna Mahamantra, whether two rounds or twelve rounds or four rounds or ten rounds, whatever, you are basically tasting a combination of fresh nectar and condensed milk, right? Are you experiencing that? But thi- this is a special khir, which is a combination of condensed milk and fresh nectar. This khir must be taken cold, Prabhupada says. If it's very hot, hot, you cannot release it fully. When it is cooled down, then you can release it much better. So to add that cooling effect, you can put some ice there. So that ice is your enthusiasm. Sarvakshanamsurabhiraagahimena ramyam. So surabhiraaga, hima means ice, right, ice. Then raga means our enthusiasm, our interest, our eagerness to chant. So to this combination of fresh nectar and condensed milk, if we add the ice of our eagerness, it becomes very nectarian. It becomes very relishable. So Radharani's name is already fresh nectar and Krishna's name is condensed milk and to this combination, you add ice. And that ice is your eagerness, your enthusiasm, your love and your affection to chant Krishna's name. We should not chant Krishna's name in a very boring manner, right? Sometimes when we are chanting, while chanting, we may sleep. Right, do you sleep sometimes when chanting or all the time? Right, sometimes we may doze off like Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna Hare Hare. Or sometimes we may even, uh, check phone while chanting or we may talk to somebody in the middle of the round. After completing the round, you can talk or before starting the round, you can talk. But even in the middle of the round, we may talk sometimes. Uh, we may walk, of course, when your legs are pain, you may walk. But point is, we should not do distracted japa. So raga means very, uh, attentively we should chant. We should chant with great eagerness, we should chant with interest. We should chant to create interest in Radha and Krishna. Actually, when we are chanting Krishna's name or Hare Krishna Mahamantra, we are rendering some service to Radha and Krishna. We discussed, right? Mahatma Anastama Partha Devi Prakritimashita. Bhajanti Ananya Manasoh, Bhajanti means devotees render service to the Lord. And even chanting the holy names of Krishna is also a service. When you are chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, whenever you say Hare, immediately Krishna becomes attentive. Hare means Radharani, right? Whenever we chant Radharani's name, Krishna becomes attracted, wow! Somebody is chanting the name of my beloved Radha. He is saying Hare, she is saying Hare. Who is saying Hare? Krishna will shower his loving glances upon all of you. Right, you want Krishna to shower his glances upon you, children? You want the loving glances and affectionate, uh, glances of Krishna, then you should say Hare. Then you want the affectionate glances of Shrimati Radharani? Merciful glances of Shrimati Radharani? Kadakarishya sihamam kripa kataksha bhajanam. Even Shiva is also praying for some affectionate merciful glances of Radharani. To get the merciful glances of Radharani, you know what you should say? Krishna. When you say Hare, Krishna looks at you. When you say Krishna, Radharani looks at you. If you want both of them to look at you, you should constantly say Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. The more you chant, the more you attract the attention of Radha and Krishna. Got it, children? Right? So when you are chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, you are giving pleasure to the hearts of Radha and Krishna. Whenever you say Hare, in the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Hare word comes eight times. So eight times Krishna will look at you. In every mantra, Krishna will look at you eight times. In every round, he looks at you eight into one or eight times. And whenever you say Krishna and Ram, Radharani looks at you. Eight times in a mantra and eight into one or eight times in a round. Eight into one or eight into sixteen, in sixteen rounds, right? So those many times Radha and Krishna are looking at you, showering their loving glances and smiles upon you. So to get their glances, we need to chant. And on top of it, chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra is like drinking, uh, cold nectarian, uh, combination of fresh nectar and condensed milk. Okay. So last line. Kritvata devapi bemerasanekshudarte. Oh, rasane means tongue. Oh, my dear tongue, shudarte, you are very thirsty. Therefore drink this nectarian beverage, drink this special khir of the combination of Radha and Krishna's names. This is how we are encouraged to chant the names of Radha and Krishna. Clear, children? So what did we discuss today? We discussed two slokas from Bhagavat Gita, nine point thirteen and nine point fourteen. Mahatma Anastama Partha and Satatam Kirtayum Toma. These two slokas are the middle most slokas of Bhagavat Gita. They appear in the ninth chapter, they are slokas number three fifty and three fifty one. Clear? And we also discussed how all the great devotees are under the shelter of Shrimati Radharani, who is the supreme goddess of devotion. And we also discussed how chanting the holy names of Krishna gives so much pleasure to Radharani and Krishna. How chanting the holy names of Krishna will make us of, uh, a special khir, which is a combination of, uh, fresh nectar and condensed milk. And how it is a service, chanting the holy names of Krishna is a service. Now let's conclude with one little story. How much, uh, Krishna is affectionate towards Radharani? One day in the spiritual world, Radharani and Krishna went to a tree. Generally, trees in this world don't have very developed consciousness. But in the spiritual world, even trees also have completely developed consciousness, right? So you don't have to climb the tree and pluck a fruit or you don't have to throw a stone at the tree to get its fruit. So you just go in front of the tree in the spiritual world and ask, my dear tree, I want some fruits. Tree will bend down and with the hands of his, of its branches, the tree will offer you fruits. One day Radharani and Krishna went to a fruit, fruit tree. And Radharani asked, my dear tree, can you give me some fruits? So Krishna was standing behind Radharani and indicated to the tree, don't give, don't give, don't give. And Radharani is in front, asking, give me fruits, give me fruits. And Krishna says, don't, don't, don't. And he was behind Radharani, Radharani is not noticing him. So what should the tree do? Should the tree follow Radharani's instructions or Krishna's instructions? If you are in the place of the tree, what will you do? Let me ask, uh, somebody. Yes, Isha? If you are in the place of the tree, will you listen to Radharani or Krishna?
If I was in the place of the tree, I would listen to Radharani because.
You will not follow the instruction of Krishna? Isha?
Lord Krishna, he says that, uh, he, uh, those who pray or, uh, meditate to his devotees, they are, uh, they are like.
They are more dear to him.
More dear to him than the people who meditate unto himself.
Ah, correct, correct. Actually, the tree also read the same thing, uh, as per your, uh, no, decision. The tree offered fruits to Radharani and Krishna became more pleased with the tree. If the, if the tree had followed Krishna's instructions and did not give fruits to Radharani, Krishna would be upset with that tree, right? Although Krishna likes people who are obedient to him, his instructions, Krishna likes people, those are more obedient to, uh, his devotees. This is affection that Krishna has towards Radharani. Now let us discuss one more story about Radharani's affection towards Krishna, very popular story. One day Radharani and Krishna were sitting together in Vrindavan. Came and started making some irritating sound on the face of Radharani, making zzz. Like this, you get irritated, right? Sanathan is smiling, you should get irritated. So Radharani got a little disturbed. Then Krishna called his dear friend, Madhumangal, come here, change this bee away. Then Madhumangal came very playfully and chased the bee away. And he came back and told Krishna, Madhu has gone away and Madhu will never come back. When Madhumangal said that, Radharani became very anxious. Because in this context, Madhumangal referred to the bee when he said Madhu. But Madhu is also another name of Krishna. So Radharani thought that, because she is so Krishna conscious, as soon as she heard the word Madhu, she remembered Krishna only. So Radharani thought that, because she is so Krishna conscious, as soon as she heard the word Madhu, she remembered Krishna only. And when Madhumangal said, "Madhu went away and Madhu will never come back," Radharani thought that Krishna went away and Krishna will never come back. That made her so emotional that she just could not control her tears. She started crying in tears of separation from Krishna, "Oh Krishna has gone away, he will never come back, he will never come back." And she started crying. Then Krishna said, "Radharani, why are you crying unnecessarily? I am right next to you, I have not gone anywhere else." But, but Radharani is crying because she could not even accommodate that statement made by Madhumangal in her ears. She could not even accommodate the thought that Krishna goes somewhere else, leaving her. So seeing her intense love and intense affection, Krishna also started crying, profuse tears. The tears of Radharani and the tears of Krishna, they both combined to form a great lake. And that lake is called Prem Sarovar, which is there in Vrindavan now also. That Prem Sarovar is, is the liquid form of love of Radha and Krishna, love between Radha and Krishna. Right? So this is how Shrimati Radharani and Krishna are bound to each other in deep divine spiritual love. So whenever we are practicing devotional service, we are basically doing it under the shelter of Shrimati Radharani. So Radhastam is coming very soon, hardly a week, we need to take shelter of Shrimati Radharani. We need to pray for her blessings to, and request her to bestow some little devotion for Krishna. Whatever little devotion that any devotee has for Krishna is only because of the blessings of Shrimati Radharani. Without her blessings, we cannot have... Pray. Deeli Krishna maii proktaradhika paradeevata. So Chitna Chirtamritth refers to this sloka, saying that Radharani is Krishna maii. She is filled with Krishna, her mind is filled with Krishna's thoughts. Her hands are constantly engaged in Krishna's seva. Her eyes are filled with Krishna's beautiful form. Her ears are filled with Krishna's flute song and Krishna's holy names and Krishna katha. Right? So her entire existence, her body, her mind, her words, her senses, her intelligence is, everything is completely dedicated to Shrimati Radharani. And if we are aspiring to become devotees of Krishna, we need Shrimati Radharani's blessings. So let us try to take shelter of deeli prakriti as Krishna instructed in the Bhagavad Gita, in the middle of Bhagavad Gita. So with this, I'll conclude. You try to learn these two slokas of Bhagavad Gita and if possible, the other longer slokas that we recited today. Thank you very much. Grantharashri mat bhagavatam ki jai, shree bhagavat gita ki jai, shala prabhu bhadki jai. Would you like to share your favorite takeaways? What did you like the most in the last one hour discussion? Yes, Shriya?
Prabhuji, that favorite takeaway is Radharani does not even show pass like they say. Offers her blessing, she shows, showers blessing to all the people.
Hmm, okay, thank you. Next, Vrinda?
Prabhuji, Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, you, you said that, that when you chant Radha's name, you get Krishna's attention. So that's, so that's why Vrindavan, you say Rade Rade, so that, so that Krishna gets your attention.
You can say Krishna Krishna also to get Radharani's attention. Thank you, Hare Krishna. Next, Isha?
I like the part that Radharani is always merciful to everybody. And everybody who wants to seek shelter of Krishna, first seek shelter of Radharani and then go to Krishna because...
Thank you. Gayatri?
Um, Prabhuji, I like the story which you told about the tree which obeyed to Radharani. It made me understand that Krishna will always bless those who obey their devotees more than him.
Hmm, great. Thank you. Next, Kabir?
Um, Prabhuji, I, I like the part where they described how the name of Krishna was like condensed milk and Radharani's name was like...
So, how many rounds are you chanting, Kabir?
Uh, Prabhuji, I have started five rounds.
Oh, jai, amazing. Yes, you can speak, Varun?
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, I li, I like the story that you have said.
Lot of noise behind you, Prabhu. Maybe you can ask the devotees behind you to be a little silent. Next, other devotees can speak. Nita Rai?
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, I love this story which you said that Radharani and the tree.
Okay. You have any questions, comments? Is Garangi? You want to say something?
Prabhuji, my favorite takeaway is Radha Krishna's name is sweet. The ice in the milkshake is our eagerness in church.
Milkshake?
From next day, I will chant with eagerness.
Yes.
And Prabhuji, I had a question also.
Yes.
Radharani is the topmost devotee and Shiva is also the topmost vishnava. So what's the difference?
Hmm, see, different devotees serve the Lord in different ways. Is Ashwadamathan not topmost devotee?
Yes, she is.
Arjuna is not topmost devotee? Uddhava is not topmost devotee? Lakshmi is not topmost devotee? All little great devotees, but all of them serve the Lord in different moods. Radharani serves the Lord in Madhuriya Rasa as a divine eternal lover. And Shiva is in the mode of a servant, Arjuna is in the mode of a friend, then Ashwadamathan is in the mode of a mother. So different devotees serve the Lord in different ways, in different moods, right, in different rasaas. Okay? Hare Krishna. Because every, you cannot compare different devotees because different devotees serve the Lord in different moods and the Lord receives different services from different devotees. Bhishma loves to serve the Lord by fighting with him. Radharani also fights with Krishna but in a more loving quarrel, not with weapons but with words. But Bhishma wants to fight with the Lord with weapons, he wants to see the blood on Krishna's body. So different devotees have different moods. Okay. Next, Mishita?
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, my question is, how many books did you publish?
Oh, that's not connected to the clue. Sorry, it's around twenty-seven, something like that. Next, Tanmai, any questions? Shall I conclude? Tejas, Tanmai?
Prabhuji, there is no questions, but I like the part which the tears formed a lake in Vrindavan.
Hmm.
I wish to take a holy dip in it.
Yes, please, visit Vrindavan. Thank you, thank you. Hare Krishna. Next, Arush?
Why doesn't Radharani wear tilak? My question is, why doesn't Radharani wear tilak?
She wears, she wears bindi, no? She wears a bindi. Definitely. Next, Sasika, Sastika?
Yes, Prabhu. I like Krishna, Prabhu. Prabhu, I like Krishna's naughtiness when she was behind Radharani waving his hands. And I also have a doubt, Prabhuji. Please advise me, how should I manage my time for devotions and service and learning academics?
Oh my God, that's a big challenge. Which grade you are in? Which class?
I'm in fifth, Prabhuji.
Sixth class?
Fifth, standard.
Standard. Okay. Five. You have lot of homework?
Yes, Prabhuji, they are giving more homework.
Hmm, where are you from?
I'm from Coimbatore.
Coimbatore, okay, fine. So let me tell you, we cannot increase that available time. You only have twenty-four hours in a day. I also have twenty-four hours only in a day. Right? And other kids also have twenty-four hours in a day. How many rounds you chant?
I'm chanting one round only, Prabhuji.
Okay, fine. So I'll give a simple formula. You please sleep early in the night. Say nine o'clock, eight thirty, nine o'clock you sleep. After the class, you sleep. And get up early in the morning. Say four o'clock or four thirty, maximum five o'clock. You should always have a competition with the sun. And you should win the competition every day. Means you should wake up before the sun, sun rises. That should be your, your goal. Every day you should get up early and you will be able to do that only when you sleep early. Right? You should have a good sleep, some maybe seven hours or eight hours depending on your age and how much are you stretching yourself throughout the day. You should have some good amount of sleep. You sleep early, say nine o'clock you sleep and four o'clock you get up, that is seven hours sleep. Okay, five o'clock you get up, eight hours. Then you can chant your rounds with more concentration. You can study your subjects with more concentration. Because early morning is brahmahortha time, right? Morning four thirty, five o'clock till whatever, six thirty, seven, that early morning hours, they are very silent. They are very much in mode of goodness. So at that time when you do spiritual practices or even academic studies also, you'll be able to concentrate better, you will learn faster. During the daytime, if you chant one round, it may take ten minutes. But early morning if you chant with concentration, you can complete the round in six minutes only. During the daytime, if you study one subject, it may take two hours. But early morning, if you just read the same subject, because you are very fresh, you just got up from sleep, you just took a fresh bath and, and you have, and this ambience is also very silent, you can finish that study in one hour only, maybe forty-five minutes only. You'll become more efficient. You cannot expand time, but we can increase our concentration, our focus during the available time. That's how we can save time for spiritual practices and also do justice to our academics and playing and other things, extracurricular activities. Okay? Would you, like other children who are in like fifth or sixth standard, would you like to share your experience? Those are chanting little more rounds and how you are managing your time for academics and your devotion? Aradhita wants to say something.
Thank you, Prabhuji, I love, absolutely follow that.
Prabhuji, like you told about that Radharani is like, she is the highest, most devotee for Krishna. Because, because like...
Yes, I agree with your opinion. She is the highest. Okay? No doubt. Undoubtedly, she is the highest. She is the topmost devotee of Krishna. Your opinion?
In Bhagavad Gita, it's also there, only in one sloka.
Correct. Yes, it's there in one sloka, nine point thirteen. Okay, thank you, children. Very happy to see all of... I still see some enthusiastic hands, at least thirteen hands are here. Okay, I'll end with couple of devotees more. Yes?
Uh, Prabhuji, which, which was the sloka that...
Bhagavad Gita, ninth chapter, sloka number thirteen and fourteen.
Prabhuji, I have a doubt. Radhika astaka or something.
There is Radha krupa katakshastotram. Next, Varuna Krishna, Prabhu?
Prabhuji, I have a doubt. You said that when we chant in the, when we chant the holy name of Krishna, we say Hare, then Krishna seetha and we say Krishna, Radharani seetha.
Okay.
Same, same like that, when we say Ra, Hare, the, the Ram, Ram seetha and when we say Ram, the Sita maya seetha, that is correct or what?
Yeah, definitely. Yes, if that is your mood, then definitely that is also correct. Thank you. Ultimately, Sitara and Shrimati Radharani are one goddess in two forms. Krishna and Ram are one god in two forms. Okay. Thank you so much, children. Happy seeing all of you. Happy Radhastami.